Three weeks now.
You will?
Yeah, I know it's your own tag. From your north there for your take if you want to.
We do the best we can.
I've got a stack of them on my phone. I guess I'm on the crossroads for the room for place to place.
Yeah, it's taking China from the property.
Oh, a living color.
No.
Oh, yeah, okay. So.
Yes.
Okay, good. But you'll be.
Yes.
One of the legislative workshop, C M L.
Yeah, yeah. Next week, yeah.
No, February thirteenth. That's what they're showing.
How much about Monday? Might go to that because I might have one next day to put that C M L. All C M L next day.
Because there's a real. And why would you want?
Ah, yeah. Oh, I don't get it. It's like, maybe that's a thing to do.
Shut it.
Plug it in.
Why are you standing there?
There you go.
We gotta get this guy plugged in.
I think he's as plugged as you're gonna get him.
Get from the twentieth century. So it's in the nineteenth century.
It's like, you're dating this in the thirties. Oh, yeah. Oh, maybe.
We're already gone.
You know, this is about.
Somebody what?
Somebody's document said that.
Now, what did he just go through? Thank you. Good job, Kimball. Just by myself. It is you. Yeah, it's up to you to take credit. They're so proud of you. Exactly.
Take credit or hot damn, I think you have to. Please, please, you properly.
If all you have is all this.
There you go. You're so bad.
They have beauty too. They have beauty too.
Yeah. I was always, uh.
You explain everything.
A lot of people were showing up because they were curious. What does J. Well, good afternoon and welcome to our work session. Today is, uh. Today is January thirteenth. I mean, now three P M. Work session will now come to order. And we have three items on the agenda. Agenda items is, one, the ordinance demanding the definition of applicant to align the requirement for getting applicants for those of the marijuana enforcement division pursuant. To H B nineteen dash ten ninety, item two, discussion regarding council liaisons to boards and commissions. And item three, the Stone Ridge Metropolitan District for Cougar Canyon. And then, of course, discussion of whether possible agenda items. I'm going to do this, I think we want to go ahead and take and do some of this in reverse order. And being that all the county commissioners and people from the county here, I'd like to take item three, which is the Stone Ridge Metropolitan District to Cougar Canyon item as no item number one. So, uh, let's go ahead and begin there. Uh, you know, as the current or the previous council knows, uh, in some sense, we don't have a real big dog in the fight here. The only thing that we can do as council is to set the, the, the board and then afterwards call for, if there are people that want to be put on as far as electors, to put them on, it's within six months for a regular election and try facilitating. So, uh, there's a lot of moving parts to this and it just so happened, it was kind of interesting. I got an email on Friday night from a gentleman by the name of Glenn, uh, Glenn Healan. And, uh, they are, he and another party are interested in purchasing the property. But as we, as we know, there are some moving parts there that have to get taken care of before it even go that way. So, Mike, why don't you go ahead and fill us in on some of the details?
Sure. Details that I know of, I know that the county had a, a work session on Cougar Canyon and I see that they have provided these must be all the taxes owed. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, without interest.
Without?
That I could find.
Understood. Um, so from the city's standpoint, uh, the only thing I could think we could be helpful with is with the metro district. The state, there was Stone Ridge Metro District one and two. Uh, the state disbanded one, which was a controlling district over Metro District two. So one is gone. Um, being that it's in the city limits, there's a, a letter in your package from, uh, uh, Hoffman, Parker, Wilson and Carberry that explains the process of what we would have to do to reseat that Metro District Board. City Council could, uh, call for, uh, anybody who would like to be appointed. Those that could be appointed are either registered, well, they have to be registered voters and a resident of the district or owner of taxable property within the district. Once the county, uh, the city, uh, puts out that request for appointments, if somebody comes forward, we could start with one appointment and then let that person appoint the rest of the board. Or, uh, city council could appoint a board. From there, that board has to do a lot of groundwork. There hasn't been budgets done since two thousand and ten. There haven't been audits done since two thousand and ten. So they would have to do that. They would have to elect, uh, you know, the chair, the president, treasurer, secretary. Then, uh, once they're seated, they have to, uh, publish a notice, uh, about the time and location of their budget hearings. They have to have the budget hearing and anybody who wants to file objections on the final adoption of the budget. It's a process that, you know, as a quasi judicial governmental agency has to go by. So those are all in there. Do the audit, then they would have to call for an election within six months of being appointed. So that board has to file a budget, get their audits up to date and then, then run an election. I don't know for sure if the hundred and sixty thousand or so that the county has collected for Metro District taxes that you're holding in escrow, I believe, if that's available to pay for the cost of hiring a CPA or whatever, running an election and, and doing that. So I'm not sure if that's available. And then, once appointed, I think the next, uh, move would be for this board to hire a bond counsel to get with the bonding company and see if they could reduce the, the cost of the bonds. It's twenty-five million dollars worth of bonds that are out there. But I'm not sure how many payments have been made to them. I don't know if the county knows, um.
I think very little.
Very little.
And my, if I may also, that, uh, the twenty-five million dollars is not inclusive of the interest that, uh, that twenty-five million dollar bond has earned up to date.
Correct.
One more thing to the, the state, uh, being that they turned in an audit. I have required by law, according to their letters, that I have to hold that money until they finish their audit.
Until they run through.
And then I can release it, but I have to get the request from the state.
Sure.
So can that money be used for some of the other purposes that we'd like Mike was asking about?
That's gonna be up to the state because they have to finish their audit or send their audit in and then they would release it and tell me to release it.
So is it your obligation to release it to this board, the Metro District Board? And it's up to them to pay the bonding company or do you release it to the bonding company?
It's to the bonding company.
Typically, like what Donna is saying, Jody Mato, Los Ananas County Assessor. What Donna is saying is generally when we collect monies for entities, we would send it like to the city of Trinidad's school board. So we're collecting those monies and revenues for Stone Ridge Metro District two. So if the board were to seat a new board for the Metro District, I'm assuming we would probably be sending that money to that board, which is in payment in lieu to that bond.
But they'd have to clear up.
But they would have to clear up for the state first, since they haven't reported anything since two thousand and ten.
So we go through this whole process, they have their six months. If they do not meet all the requirements at this end of six months, what happens?
That's a great question.
Will the, will the state step in like District one and District two and wipe it out? I mean, where do we go then? If all this is done and they don't meet the requirements, does it mean like, well?
Well, I have another issue besides that and, uh, Mike and I were discussing this earlier. Is that, let's say that we try to seek a board out there, but we can't get anybody to respond.
Right.
Then what happens? So, and then, and then the other thing too, let's say they use the board and then they try to go out for the election and no one puts out their name for the election as, you know, as electors. Then what happens? So these are some things that we need clarification on.
Well, this is a making of a big headache, right? And then I'm not, I'm not clearly understanding a lot. It's, I know the city has an interest in it because it's incorporated in the city, is that true? The county has an interest in it because of all the unpaid taxes and those that you have collected that you're holding. And then there is a Metro District who actually has authority over that area, is that correct? Kind of.
Correct.
Uh, am I on the right page with what everybody else is nodding the S Q?
The Metro District is at the Title thirty-two district and they have applied fifty-five mils. So as the assessor, I have to make sure that all tax bills that are going out within that Metro District, which encompasses just Cougar Canyon and the Stone, Stone Ridge Development, that all of those tax bills have that fifty-five mils applied to it. Even though they are a board that is not functioning at the time because we do not have any paperwork or court orders or anything from the state stating that that district has been disbanded or defunct, we still have to apply the fifty-five mils because that is what's out there. So that Metro District sits, it's a, a, and like any other district, like a fire district, the city district, anything. So that's sitting out there on top of all of those parcels.
Okay, and, and the whole issue out there concerns itself with a non-existent golf course. The skeleton of a, of a hotel that was beginning. A whole bunch of lots to the southeast that have yet to be sold and some are sold.
All the lots are under.
And, and then, and then a row of houses on the northwest corner of that property, is that correct?
There are nineteen structures out there, including the Hafield Hotel.
Right.
So eighteen of those are homes. Um, there are three hundred and fifty-seven lots out there. They are all under pri, some sort of private ownership. Um, the majority of them is A M P, G R A U, some of it's Trinidad Holdings things. So they're, they are owned by, and we have a few private entity owners, but the majority of it is owned by, you could say, developers.
Right, and, and are there not, as I'm understanding, layer upon layer of encumbrances from finance companies and bankruptcies and just, just a number of other issues that make one hell of a spaghetti sauce?
You could say that and those layer upon layer is going to take some brilliant attorneys to do the digging on that.
Cause the people who are owed money, I'm not just gonna walk away from it, I wouldn't think.
Well, there's so many bankruptcies that have taken place since about two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine out there that you would have to start digging through those bankruptcy files to see what debt was wiped, what debt is held, things of that nature.
So maybe before we get a board or as part of a board, we needed an attorney or somebody who has the legal capacity to sort through all of that and find out where we are, right? I don't know.
I think that's what Kendrick Harbury was trying to do.
And we heard him, right?
Yep, exactly.
What you got? If I just, you know.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I didn't want to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, no, please, go ahead.
You know, Aaron and me and Aaron, we haven't been on this council to know what's going on. What exactly, dumb question, what exactly does that board have to do with us and what does a board actually do with out there?
Well, the board is not, it isn't in existence.
Well, that's what I meant, so why are we putting one in existence?
In order to basically be able to get a, um, something up and running that can kind of, kind of begin to, to rectify these problems. And that is to, you know, to, to have a, a board, that is what you have to do to begin to talk about what you're going to do, I guess, to undo the mill levy eventually, but in order to, um, resolve the bond issues. And really, I think is the first step in whatever we're going to do to be able to solve problems. I, it gives us kind of a toehold in being able to have a controlling board to make decisions regarding indebtedness and, uh, and what is going to happen with, uh, with everything that is going on out there.
Is it a city or a county or who's responsible to create this? Are the factors? It's the authority of the city. Okay. Because they're within city.
Cities, right. Arnold's, are these?
If I may, um, basically what we're all here today to talk about this is to get the ball rolling.
Get some movement.
With the Metro District. What's happened is there's six point six million dollars without interest that's owed on that property on all those lots and everything else that's out there. And, and Mr. Mato can break that down for you. She brought the numbers that she made of how much the city and our different school districts are losing out on. But that's mainly why we're here, it's just to, to be a support system, how can we work together with, with the city?
Exactly.
And, and come together to finally help create that place that's out there and start our, I'm on the tour of board as well. And affordable housing is non-existent in the community. If we're able to help the city and we will come together and work together, then Donna can go ahead and take over and do the tax things on it. We can, after the Metro District's dissolved, we can take over as county, uh, help properties. We can put them back and sell them, auction them, get them back into our developer's hands and start building houses again and then we can start with taxes. So if, and I may, so we may give the ball to them.
What is happening?
Why don't you come forward, Jersey?
Thank you. I'm already sure.
Would it be more comfortable for both of all of you to come up closer? I don't, I don't know.
I can yell.
I know, I've heard you sing.
Essentially, what is happening with all of these properties out there is we are assessing them, they are being applied to the tax roll, but the taxes are not being paid. The revenues are not coming through the door because there is a bond out there of originally twenty-five million sitting out there. It is the highest tax district in our entire county. The Metro District alone is fifty-five mils. So the metric, so the tax base and tax mill levy just for Cougar Canyon and Stone Ridge is over a hundred. That's the highest in all of Los Ananas County. So what the county is trying to do is if we can get some movement and get a board seated, get something functioning out there so we can get these properties hopefully cleared of some of this debt that's hold, that is held above it, so we can get them back on the tax roll, get them generating revenue into these districts. Currently, I just pulled seventeen and eighteen because what I do is I send out an assessment. I send an assessment to all the entities, all the school districts, the cities, towns, counties, ambulance districts, everybody. That is all the value, what that land and structures are worth out in your areas of the county. I certify that to you first in August, then again in December is your final. What is happening is on that piece of paper, it says, I have X amount of dollars assessed value. I have X amount of dollars of revenue coming in. What is in reality is happening is that those taxes, they're accounted for in the assessment and the abstracting certification, but the tax dollars are not actually being generated, they aren't being paid. So for the last two years of tax year twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen, the city of Trinidad, in those two years for a total, has not collected a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars because of Cougar Canyon. The ambulance district for twenty tax year seventeen and eighteen has not collected fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Your school district, the only one that's affected by Stone Ridge, which is the Honi School District, RE three, has not collected a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-seven because that value is on the assessments. I have to assess it, that's my duty by law. But we send them a tax bill, they don't pay it. So that is revenue and funds that aren't coming into these entities. So that's why we're hoping the city can help us get some traction.
Is, is, uh, if we had a district, are they the ones who would negotiate those, those tax debts or who?
That's a good question and that's why we're gonna have, there's going to be a lot of attorneys and a lot of state people involved in this. The district, I believe, unless you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the district would probably with the help of the city and some attorneys, would have to negotiate the tax debt with the county. They would also have to address the issue of the bond. Cause that is what the Metro District was set up for, that's what the mill levy was set up for, was to pay back the bonding company for all the infrastructure and building when the development first started in two thousand and seven.
Why were no, if, I'm assuming there are tax liens against the property then?
There are.
Why are they not foreclosed? Why did the county not take that action?
We can't foreclose them and Donna can probably answer that question better. We do put them up for tax.
Why don't you come forward, Donna?
People probably do not want to buy them because of the amount of tax lien that is on them.
The O B C C, which is also the board of county commissioners, can wipe out the debt on all of the tax dollars owed on the back taxes.
That was gonna be my next question.
We, we have the authority to do so through Donna's office and we make the approval. However, the fifty-five mils, who's gonna buy the property? Makes no sense for us to wipe out that debt, turn around, resell the property and then the same vote that these people are in now. Their tax debt is higher than the property value actually was.
So what do we do? Can we reduce that mill?
If you dissolve the Metro District. That's why we're here to start the, the board, uh, if, if the board.
Does that answer you? That's why we're here is to try to get this farm, get the mills reduced.
I, I understand that. And then, what, what Mike concern is that if you have a board, you, you got a board formed and, and, and what directly, they're gonna do exactly what? They're gonna sell the property, they're gonna go after people, what are, I mean?
The board's, their board's, um, duty per se is to run it like city council does because they're a Title thirty-two district. So they would have to fill out their audits, they would have to do budgets. Essentially, they're no different than a school district, no different than city council members. You're, they're there to run the business of the Metro District, essentially to make sure the bond gets paid.
Well, what I'm concerned about is who's gonna pay those taxes? What I mean, we have a board, but how are we gonna collect that?
Well, and that's what's happening now. The people that are paying taxes, which is primarily the homeowners out in Cougar Canyon, are the ones that are, are carrying the tax burden right now. That's why we have so much tax debt, like what Ms. Leonetti handed out, because people are not paying the taxes.
Can I ask on that, what you handed out? Is this just Cougar Canyon taxes or overall county?
That's Cougar Canyon and Stone Ridge, the whole Metro District.
But it's just the fifty-five mils or is it the whole school district, uh?
It's the whole.
It's the whole thing? Okay.
Now, on each one, I show, like the first one, I show, uh, Stone Ridge and it shows thirty-four counts. So that means I have thirty-four county health certificate that's on it.
Which means what I'm getting at is these people are owners in the district who may want to come and seat the board and they owe all these taxes. Just putting that out there.
Yep. Well, you know, whoever is assigned or seated on this board has to have some, some knowledge about how to proceed with this. I, it's, it's not to go, a board to go sit on to learn.
Right, no.
You have to bring a, a big resume full of acumen in order to work through this.
So, if I may, a couple of things, a couple of bullet points that I, as we were reading all this information, as we've been talking about this. So Frank, I think, you know, the step one is gonna be, when was the last time that we had an audit? And I, and the document says two thousand and ten. So we have to assess the financial stability and or the indebtedness of the whole thing. What is that? Then pair with that, we've gotta get all caught up with the audits financially. What is the, 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 the bond indebtedness really worked into whom? How many liens are on top of all the original liens? So that's the whole thing. The third, uh, uh, bullet point that I actually made for myself is basically once you have that absolutely correct, Mr. Mate, you have to have the knowledge of legal and accounting to see what are gonna be the next steps to go through the process. And the same board, uh, which could be seated by city council, you can actually sit one position and or if you don't have enough, uh, response, you can actually place them all. But the same board is gonna have to have the ability, as Commissioner Luis Lopez said, to dissolve the Metro District. And then, at that which point, the county does have the opportunity to come in and say, well, now we are in a capacity to, what do, what do we do with the taxes? Or back to the county? Do we sell them at thirty cents on the dollar? Do we sell them at ninety cents on the dollar? But this whole discussion is that that property there is not doing any good to, to anyone. And what my, my calculation, which it's pretty staggering, when you take, I actually read the national bond interest rates that are actually assessed to, uh, various Title thirty-two Metro Districts, whether it's here in Colorado or out of state. It could be anywhere between one point eight percent and this particular one is seven point two five, I believe. So when you do the calculation from two thousand and seven to twenty twenty, the interest rate is, is beginning to catch up with, with the whole thing. So, uh, I, I, I hope that, that kind of responded to your question and, uh, the steps, and you're absolutely correct. It's gonna have to be legal and accounting to decide where to go from here.
So that begs the question to my mind, it's not gonna be a volunteer board? I mean, these people have to be.
That was my other question.
I mean, good Lord, you gotta have salary to pay for your medication. I'm, I'm serious.
That's for that in my budget.
If I could interject, legal, uh, you're talking CPA, you're talking bond counsel. That's why I asked if that hundred and sixty thousand was accessible by this board because somebody's gonna have to come up with this money. And in order to get this thing going. Going, it's gonna take county staff time, it's gonna take city staff time and, and we just sit around and drink coffee anyway. But, you know, it's, we're all swamped with stuff, so go ahead and go.
To answer your question, Mike, I believe, and I would have to go back and check, but I believe three mils of the fifty-five were for, um, maintenance, management maintenance. So I believe, um, on one that I sent forwarded to Ms. Audra, that the forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars we're holding in escrow, that is the management or maintenance part of the bond. The one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars was payment to the bond. So yes, there is part of that, there's three mils out of the fifty-five that go to management.
It's about forty-two thousand dollars.
Yes.
So what I'm hearing is if we're able to seek the board, you can release that?
I'm hoping so. And if the state, if Dora actually sends Donna that paperwork. I have been speaking with a gentleman from Dora who specifically handles Metro Districts. His name is Joe McConnell and, um, he's been very instrumental and I can send you all his contact information. Um, he was instrumental in, I believe, the dissolution of Metro District one. Of, and hopefully he can guide us and hold our hands because this has happened before. Um, there was a Metro District, I believe it was southwest of Highlands in Denver, that did the same thing. But theirs was more of a horror story because that Metro District came in.
War of the horrors?
Yes, yes, it was. Because their, that, that Metro District came in and upped that bond levy. I believe it was close to sixty-some percent and those people within that Metro District, the next year got sticker shock on their tax bills.
You know, I'll just, another thing I want to mention to you, I talked to the superintendent of Honi last Friday and we were talking about this. And, uh, he is of the opinion, and of course, it's not up to him, it's up to the board, that if we can get the county to evade all the taxes, uh, start from ground zero. That's what they figure is probably the best solution because then at least they could start, you know, to start brand new.
And I have to agree with those sentiments and that is my personal opinion. If we can get this property where it's accessible and affordable and get that debt off, then we can get it back in, in the system and be, have it viable. Currently, I assess on a lot out there is around twenty-six thousand dollars. Currently, I assess on a lot out there is around twenty-six thousand dollars. So the taxes, if we didn't have all the back taxes, if we didn't have all the indebtedness, the tax bill would be around eight hundred dollars a year.
I have a question. Forty-two thousand dollars in my mind, doesn't seem a lot of money for CPA and an attorney and any other professional. Besides that forty-two thousand dollars, does the county have any money in their coffers to put forth on this effort? And we gotta think about where the city's gonna come up with this money as well. I'm, I'm thinking that's just a drop in the bucket.
That's where I step down, and I let somebody else with a bigger hat take it out.
Going back to some of the initial conversation, is if we can, through the process that Donna, you're mentioning, if there's a way that we can get down the road, after some of this work has been done, get the balance of that money to be released, if that's possible. That would be, you know, one avenue that we can, you know, try to get to.
Is resurrecting the metro district and making it a functioning legal body the only option that, can we just? Do away with it, can you, can you just write it off? There is no more.
You can, I don't believe you can write it off.
Yeah, I, it seems too simple. I, I understand that.
I do think.
You have to work through it.
I think all solutions, i- i- if you look at the solutions, whatever it may be, they all point to a beginning point of, of reconstituting the law.
A metro district?
Yup, that's right.
Cause otherwise you have to pay the money over. I mean, seriously.
Somebody has to be responsible for it.
Right, you can pay the money and then make it all go away.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Les, but I also think that there is a way that you can do this through district court. But I believe the majority or all of the stakeholders, landowners in the district have to be one hundred percent in agreeance to dissolve it through district court.
That's correct, or eminent domain, possibly. There are a number of, of options. You're right, in the spirit of full and fair disclosure, it's not the only solution, but go ahead.
And you mentioned eminent domain and an urban renewal, as you mentioned earlier, which will, has a, a hand in this as well, and, and. Is there any mechanism or authority that lies in the urban renewal authority to work magic?
I know, I, I, I know that urban renewal, when it first constituted, they looked at the hotel, as it was dilapidating of actually, uh, condemning it and taking it over. But when you condemn a property, that doesn't mean you just take it over. You've gotta pay whoever owns it fair market value. Fair market value was set when they went up to the courthouse and to clear title on it, put down three million dollars. So that's a fair market balance. You wanna buy that hotel in the shape it is for three million dollars.
I went to somewhere, I can even figure it out.
Yeah, we have, we have three issues here that really are, they all, we have the metro district, which pays all the taxes. We have the bond company that we gotta deal with. And then the last thing that really plays into this is that we have this gentleman that is willing to try to work with us for purchase of the property afterwards. So that's, you know, they are kind of the last piece of it, for the first two parts is something that we have to try to work through.
And in the perfect world, well, background, uh, when this probably been developed, most you remember, Mr. Shrekford and his organization kept going back to Jody's office when Mr. Spinoza was the assessor, and they kept inflating the mill to borrow more money on it. That's what happened, why they inflated so high, if I remember correctly, right to a G. So having said that, they kept borrowing and raising the mill to just to borrow more money and develop the property. What I'd like to see, and I believe the county government would like to see, is a dissolution of the metro district. Number one reason is because of the high mill. It's eight hundred dollars now for a lot, just in taxes, just for a vacant lot. You put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home on there, you've got people that are in, in a, in a debt-to-income ratio, without mill levy, and, and, and your affordable housing's out the window now, and now you're living in a high-rent district. So in a perfect world for us as a county, it'd be nice if we could see a board put back together, metro district, and move forward that way. The other gentleman that you're talking about possibly coming in and, and buying it all and eliminate the debt, well, we're just gonna put the, put the boat in the same dry lake again.
Right.
That's all that's gonna happen. And it'd be great if, if everybody in Trinidad had all these high-paying jobs that could buy a three hundred thousand dollar home, but we know where we're at. So according to urban renewal, and our, that board, uh, the, the housing from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that price range is not existing anymore, because those homes aren't available. And that's what is the need in this community right now. But Coal Mine, the people in Australia that have mentioned, made mention of that, that that was one of the biggest considerations of coming here, if they had affordable housing for their employees. And they looked around, obviously, it's still kind of there, you know. So that would be the perfect scenario for, for us as a county moving forward to help. Whatever we can do to assist, if, if we need to seat some of us on the board, I'm sure we'd be raising our hands to be part of it, or whatever needs to be done. Maybe our county attorney can help. As far as the funding mechanism, we still have the one B excess revenues, um, that we haven't gone to the voters yet to ask. So is there money out there? Yes, can we access it? Not yet. Uh, we haven't decided as a county whether we're gonna ask taxpayers to keep the excess yet. Uh, that's probably coming up here in the next couple of months, possibly beyond the members' ballot. So is there funding out there? There could be.
With the seat on that board, from the, if I remember, you either gotta own property or live out there, one of the two.
Correct, yes. And to just, just dissolve the metro district, that bonding company is not gonna go away. Twenty-five billion plus interest, they're, they're gonna say, hey, these.
Yeah. So I think, you know, Jody and I were just having a side conversation, why don't we do this? Let Jody reach out to the Dora representative and see, uh, because he has gone through, probably worked through so many of this here in the state, that he might put us in contact of the accounting, the legal, that kind of things. And then if we need to have a sequel to this meeting, I think it would be in our best interest to bring him in here, make an invitation, invite him to Trinidad, so he can kinda walk through the process. And by this time, all of us have pretty much information that what are gonna be the next steps. Are you all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the persons who own, in, in the individuals who own lots that are not paying their taxes?
The individuals that own lots, most of them are paying their taxes. Those people that own homes or have structures out there, the majority that aren't paying their taxes are, are your developers. And like I said, we have possibly four large ones.
Okay.
And it's on that list that gave you.
Yeah, and, and to what extent has the city put infrastructure out there? How much utility do they have?
Well, that's part of, so when somebody comes in to do a subdivision, they say, the developer comes in and says, hey, I'm gonna do this, and we're gonna say, hey, you need these city, uh, things. So we get an engineer's estimate, and they, they put up bonds just to, uh, pay for what they say they're gonna build in case they walk away. Of course, that whole scenario is separate. So there is, with that twenty-five million dollars that they, they put in there, there is water, sewer, gas, electric, all the way down that Masterson, uh, into all those subdivisions, for the most part. Those lots have city utilities put in there by the developer, stubbed in, ready to go.
So it's worthy of our attention to reclaim some of that investment that you.
Well, we didn't put it in, they put it in. That's where the twenty-five million.
What I'm trying to say is, it's not prairie land that's out there, it's, it's, if there's reasonable building sites and have utilities brought to them almost already.
Audra, you had something that you wanted to mention?
Well, I just wanted to repeat what Mike said. I don't think that, um, you know, just seating a board means that it can just be dissolved without that debt being addressed. That, that has to be addressed. But here's the other thing too, the mills have to stay at those fifty-five mills until it's paid for. So you're gonna have a situation, even if, this is just my thought. You're gonna have a situation, even if the county decides to forgive the tax debt out there, where those same eighteen homeowner, homeowners are trying to dwindle down that two-point-five million dollar debt that's gonna start all over with fifty-five mills, even if that board's seated. Even if they start at zero, they're gonna have to pay. They'll ha- those other people will have to pony up and pay their twenty-six thousand dollars for this to ever go away. And it's, it's challenging, cause the mills don't reduce.
Unless there's a way to reduce it.
Unless it's paid, no. You keep the mills at the same, but the debt gets reduced.
The, the, the mills could possibly be reduced, whatever the board decided, but you're right, the debt will still be there. I think the bonding company will, will have. The, the bonding company, which I'm very surprised, and this is my personal opinion, why they haven't, why this bonding company hasn't been knocking on the treasurer's door, asking for this money? So that makes me think, where are they, who are they, and what is going on with that? But when the metro district started in two thousand and seven, the mill levies were forty-five, and then they increased them. I believe the board will be able to probably lower them somewhat, but the bonding company, in my opinion, is probably going to want their money. Why they haven't come yet, if anybody finds that answer, please let me know.
And are they going into default, you know? It's two thousand and thirty-one. So two thousand and thirty-one is where the expiration of the bond is gonna be. But here is what happens, when the mills went from, the best I can calculate is from forty-five to fifty-five is because there wa- there was an additional money borrowed. So when you take the calculation from two thousand and seven all the way to two thousand and thirty-one, collecting so much, making a, a, a projection that all these lots and, 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 uh, brokers are gonna be occupied, you're gonna be able to collect the twenty-five million dollars basically that you're borrowing. So in a sense, you're paying what, exactly what you borrowed. But at this point in time, I think the debt is so convoluted with the interest, with the original debt. Now, I, I think the question that you had, the, the statement that you made, Audra, is perfectly sound that in order for the, the mills to be reduced, something has to be forgiven on the other side. There has to be an adjustment. It's not gonna be a comprehensive decision that's gonna be made by this board. Well, you know, well, we're gonna reduce the mills to zero. Well, then who pays the debt? Well, that's right.
Now, last summer, there was a gentleman here in town that I talked with, and he was pretty well aware of the bonding company that owns these bonds, and he was surprised at everything that's been going on out there. And I don't know if he was involved with this, cause that's what he does. I don't know if he was involved with the original bonding company or not. But he was thinking, because nothing, everything has gone so sour out there, that he felt bonding company may be willing to take pennies on the dollar, just to get rid of it at this point in time, because it's not going anywhere. So that would be an avenue to look at.
And that's a suggestion, is once the board is seating, seated, hire bond counsel to go after the bonding company to try and reduce that debt.
So at this point, it sounded like, you know, you're gonna get together with Dora to see if they have any thoughts behind it?
I will reach out to him and.
We need to get together as a council again?
Yes, if that's something the council and commissioners would like to do.
Bring that information to us, and then we can.
I will send it to Ms. Audra and.
And then that'll, you know, that'll determine whether or not we want.
Cause when do you?
How do we move forward with, uh, you know, with seating the, our new board?
When would be your next work session, or can you schedule them two weeks from now?
We can schedule a work session.
Okay, can do them whenever?
But it is every off week like this, we could be in a couple of weeks.
I will reach out to him and be in contact with you and see what we can get done.
Cause I have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Anne.
Well, I have three, my, my understanding is, everything is hinged on this board. That needs to be created, a metro district board. Okay, then there needs to be a way, as Karen had suggested, to finance this board in all that it needs to do. And that, that needs to be done. And then, as Mr. Lopez and Jody have mentioned, there's somebody from, who can, who has had experience here, who can maybe guide us and invite him here, as you suggest, Felix, and you point us in the right direction. Are those the three key points today that we agreed on? I think I, I would agree that for now, yes. Okay.
Good, let's go now. Karen, do you have any additional questions, Frank?
No, no, thank you.
Those three, yeah, Donna?
My main concern is to, for the people to be appointed to that board, are gonna be people that own property or be developers that were out there, that could be part of the problem that originally started. We're gonna be appointing to save people back to a new board.
Mr. House.
And that concerns the hell out of me.
It concerned me too, and Jody told me, you know, Commissioner House, you can't dictate who's gonna play in that saddle.
That's right, I know, but it's still concerned. It's very concerning that we're gonna step right back into the same circle again.
I am one hundred percent with you, Mr. Goodall.
Do you have any, any questions, Anne?
Um, this, this is all really new to me, but it seems to me that the people that have some of the highest vested interest of this decision, of the people that are currently living out there, is there any possible way that those people, if interested, could serve on a board if they would be provided the proper counsel? I mean, obviously, it was instrumented, it's that they need to be educated, but if those people were provided counsel to, to work through that, is that a possible solution? Cause they have the most interest.
Well, not at that, but they're qualified by virtue of their residency.
Right, right.
They're the ones who.
Is there any caveat you could put on the, the, your member?
That's what we're, yeah.
You will be appointed to the board if your taxes are paid in full.
The other thing too is, we, if we put it out there, can we ask maybe for a resume?
Well, yeah, you're gonna have to advertise, you know, fully, we're gonna have to put it in the newspaper, or we're gonna have to get with Jody and say, we need addresses for everybody, so that everybody knows, that way it's all above board. Um, yeah, and then I, that's a good question of, we'll ask the attorneys that, their resume, if it says paid, taxes paid in full on it.
I'm talking about any background experience that they have, maybe, cause like you were saying, they're gonna have some, have to have some more.
About what we're doing. More important, and it sounds like, another thought just occurred to me, it's kind of the city's responsibility to orchestrate and initiate the development of this board, is that true?
Sure.
Do what I'm saying.
We see.
I, I'm thinking county heads up, I'm thinking that it, it shouldn't be something, it is our responsibility because of the rules. But I think the reality and the pragmatic part of this is, we should, I think, work hand in glove with the county
Please.
to pick this board. It's not, we're gonna pick this board and say, y'all gotta live with our decisions, and I don't think it should work that way. I think everybody's got big skin in the game, and we need to.
And we are here to support, help, hopefully answer questions, track down answers, whatever we can do to assist.
Yeah, of course, and you have the resources to access that information.
I can tell you.
She's an exempt employee, so she don't get overtime.
Yeah, I don't get overtime.
She's not exempt, she's elected.
Donna, you have some other thoughts?
I, I do, I have one more thought. If all else fails, the county can apply for treasurer's deed on most of these accounts. Um, the only bad thing is, the county will have to pay for the O and E's, which average out to be maybe from eighty to a hundred and twenty dollars on each one. Uh, the pub, probably fifty bucks to advertise them in the article, news, certified mail, that we have to get out to each whoever shows up on the O and E's. Uh, once they apply for treasurer's deed, cause they're all county health certificates, it takes about six months, uh, to do the process, and the county can't get a treasurer's deed on it. Another bad thing that would happen is they would wipe out the taxes, but we can have an auction or try to sell them one by one and move forward, get them back on the tax roll again.
I think we need everything on the table. I think, let me look at everything.
Yeah, well, little I know about it from, from my, um, certificates mean that the county, oh, yeah. Yes, why, why would these things go to auction, and does somebody take ownership of it, bid on, to your question or do? The county does, they have the certificates, certificate meaning, and they never have.
And that is because the taxes are so high, no individual buyer came in and wanted to purchase them, so.
Like they bought them, became the counties.
And that's pretty much every one of these.
You have some answers to, to mention?
I was just gonna say, we actually asked, um, Catherine Sellers about not seating people who haven't paid taxes, and we can't, we can't discriminate that way. They own property, we have to see.
Since that's our, like you say, our responsibility, city, would we be able somehow to get around that with one of our board members to be on that? Because you might not find anybody qualified, what if we don't find anybody qualified to take the director job? I mean, how many, how many board members are we looking at?
I think we have to kind of cross that bridge when we come to.
Well, I know that, but then we need to buy.
And we could appoint one, and then that board member can appoint the other four, but I think the city council should probably have the authority.
So, John, you have a question?
I have one more question for, probably Ms. Motto. Have any of these large landowners approached the county and asked about negotiating any of this? I mean, where are they in this?
Most of them, I can tell you, AMP comes in once a year. Um, the most recent sale I had was a quick claim sale from, I believe it was Stone Ridge Development to a GRAU, um, which a quick claim means, I, I could quick claim visibility, has no warranty. Um, I, they have been coming forward, but most of them, we continue to send out tax bills, and they just continue to put them in a drawer somewhere.
Who, who's Bobby Hill?
Um, Bobby Hill would have been in.
He just has one.
He just has one. We have had one owner, uh, Mr. Hill.
Wants to give us a land, he don't want us to do it, or pay the taxes, or nothing, but we, we can't go that process, you have to follow procedure. He doesn't want us to do it anymore. He invested a million dollars and got so many lots, and now his lot.
He invested a million dollars and got so many lots, and now his lots...
The tax liability.
The taxes owes more on his lots than the million dollars he's worth.
Than his worth. Okay.
So, the rest of these investors are probably the same way.
Are they people who would be eligible to serve on the board too?
Most of them, A and P, we send everything to Arizona, so they're an out-of-state investor. Um, G R A U, we send those tax bills to, um...
An address here in town?
To an address, uh, the company that's working out of the old Valcom building, or Keller Glass, pardon me, the old Keller Glass building. So I don't know, you would have to look through their limited liability, who that would be. Um, I'm assuming it has to be somebody who probably started this venture back in two thousand and seven. Um, most of them, you're going to have a very, maybe twenty, that are individual ownership.
Okay, I'm just, the reason I ask that is because I'm assuming some of these people are sophisticated investors and might be useful on that kind of board. I, I find it...
I would hope so. I think a lot of them, they're very tied to the beginning of this, like Mr. Goodall alluded to. Uh, we might be seating a board to get us right back to the same position we were when this all went down the journey. So it would, you have a large task in front of you, you would really have to do some vetting and interviews and see who would be qualified.
Which brings one last point. If we could check and see, Ben, we can't discriminate by whatever as far as setting the board. If we can make one of the recommendations, see if this is possible, that they need to... We would refer to set a board of residents that live out there to better work with city council to get through this process. If we could see that, then we would have a better set, I think, of people to appoint to this board, choosing from people who are living out there. They have a better interest than some of these investment people.
And I'll ask Pam Nelson to investigate and look into legally, unless you might know if you cannot, since their county holds certificates, if Jody or Donna's office could sit on that board, since they are county council.
That would be excellent.
The other question that I brought up earlier is, that I think we need to get an answer to is, let's say we try to find somebody, we can't find anybody, then what do we do? That would be the big question.
That's a good question for council.
I do know the developers, most of those are LLCs, so you would have to start digging into that to see who sits on those boards or who are the LLC holders. And most of them, I'm sure, are probably going to be out of state or... And I don't know if you could set somebody that's part of the LLC on the board. I have to agree with you. Um, it would probably have to be somebody out there that has a vested interest. And I can tell you, every year when the tax bills come out, I have every taxpayer comes in and we have a discussion. They're getting more educated as the years go on about the metro district, the findings of the workings, because I don't make this up, I have to apply it by state statute.
Okay, let's go on to wind this up. Like I said, the first step is gonna be, you know, like I said, you're gonna get some information from Dora.
Mm-hmm.
Get back to Mike on that, and then we'll see what we proceed from there.
We can, thank you.
Thank you all so much for...
Your time.
Would you like to buy any land? We have a land for sell that one.
Chief, chief!
She is beautiful.
It is beautiful, but it has problems.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah, Sam's up there. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, let's go on to the, let's go back to item number one, which is the ordinance of ending the definition of applicant to align the requirement for vetting applicants with those of the marijuana and horse provisions pursuant to HB nineteen dash ten ninety. Uh, is that you Mike, or is that Les?
It is me.
All right.
Mayor, councilmember, something, a couple of questions. In the beginning, I want to start there. In the beginning of the marijuana melia, the concentration was very much on knowing who owned marijuana businesses, who the financial people were, where the money was going to be coming from to start the business, and where the money was going to be going when the marijuana business started making money. The Department of Revenue, I don't know. I think Councilman Mateo had only hold over from the beginning of marijuana, but now Councilman Chu is too. But, um, in the, the very beginning, there were concerns like that the Russian mob was involved, and the Russian mafia was going to be getting money from the marijuana industry. But the, the concern very much was where the money was going to be coming from, going in, and where the money was going to be going to, going out. Now, obviously, that is not such a concern as indicated by the fact that you can now have publicly traded companies that are in the marijuana business and that own these businesses. Um, previously, I don't mean to ping pong back and forth, but previously, we would vet and investigate and get information on anyone who was a ten percent or greater owner in, in a marijuana business. I think the rule was five percent back when we first began. Maybe I dreamt that's the word. I thought it was five, because we did, as your counsel, who attention on this subject points out, we did adopt a new marijuana ordinance in two thousand and sixteen that replaced the existing ordinance we had. But in any event, we would do background checks. We would do everything like we do now on anyone who was an owner of a marijuana business. Now, the, the concern, you have to have, in a minimum, a managing member of a marijuana business. But now the Department of Revenue is really not so concerned with the financial aspect of it. And it is one kind of, you know, one thought to, to have you thinking about it, and that is, marijuana is still illegal on the federal level. Everybody knows that. However, Ms. Garrett has several pending transfer of ownership applications right now that are kind of waiting on this, and they are publicly traded companies or they are, you know, they issue a lot of stock. And the SEC is regulating these transactions. They're regulating what these companies are doing. So we now even have federal agencies watching and monitoring and participating all the while, while marijuana is still illegal on the federal level. That was a total digression. I just find that fascinating because, you know, because anyway, that, it exists on the, on the federal level and it's acknowledged, but it still is technically illegal. With that confusing conclusion, any questions? So we're, we're asking you, in this work session, consider the, the ordinance that you have in your packet to redefine applicant.
One thing that was interesting in here, that they mentioned, in the, uh, is that anybody that has less than ten percent, it's gonna be almost pretty hard to get any information from them. So if you have, let's say you have nine people, or ten people have nine percent, to get every information, it's gonna be difficult.
That's right. And you could have a thousand people who each have one, one thousandth. I mean, I guess I could be at home in my pajamas, on my e-trip account, buying stock, and I technically become a, you know, kind of a part financial owner of a marijuana business. But that's also correct. So if you have a company like that, which is a whole bunch of minor investors or various ownerships, then you would have a person who is a managing member that would be the person responsible of a license.
That's what I read. So you have one, at least one person, no matter what percentage, that you will vet?
Right, right. But that person may not be an owner.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and back in the beginning, we would have lengthy conversations with people about where their money was coming from. And they were required to divulge all financial interests. They would, you know, we would spend a lot of time, I'd point over here because of where Councilwoman Miles sat. She would always ask people a lot of questions about where their money was coming from, who it really was, whether there was kind of a shell corporation or shell financing arrangement. I'm digressing again, I'm sorry.
So a lot of those questions kind of go out the window to some...
Right, yes, yes, they really do go out the window. And we kind of, you know, if the Department of Revenue, which, by the way, there's a lot more vetting than we are ever able to do. But if the Department of Revenue, and, and this is to get us in, in compliance with their statutory changes, their Department of Revenue regulations, I mean, that is what we are hoping to do here. But if the Department of Revenue is not finding it to be an area of concern, respectfully, I don't think we should either.
Right, so if Congress will decide they don't want to enforce this, then what happens?
Well, then we have a problem, because we're...
I just throw it out?
I know, I understand, I understand. Then we wouldn't, we wouldn't jive with what the Department of Revenue was doing. And I, I just think this is a, you know, we always have on council communications, you could reject the proposal, but, but we need this in order to be in compliance with what the Department of Revenue was doing and what they want us to do.
It's kind of a pretty around you, so longing to look to the state for some sort of direction. And a lot of the decisions we were making were like playing whack-a-mole because we had no direction.
Right, good point.
And if this allows for consistency between us and the state, just by virtue of the definition of the word applicant, it probably is in at least our best interest to follow along so that there's a measure of continuity
Right.
between the two levels, the state and local.
Good point.
Ms. Gregor, you have any questions?
Yeah.
We'll move on, right?
I have one. Um, so where, where we are now is it says in our code that the applicant shall include all persons who are the members and managers of such entities. So what we do, what we'd be doing now is saying only those who have a ten percent or more ownership interest?
Um, we are, uh, it, it is, the second sentence says, if the applicant is an entity and not a natural person, applicant shall include all persons who have a ten percent, ten percent or more ownership interest in such entity in terms of that is who we are vetting.
Okay.
And so, yes, and, and that would be the responsible applicant if there is such a person.
Okay.
What's gonna be interesting is if we have someone that's ten percent ownership, maybe they're in ten block two to get them here.
Right, right.
Then they'd need the license.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
And we, we had a number of LLCs on, on one license that were so divided up, it almost was, well, anyway, it was, it was pretty complicated in two, in terms of who owned what of the LLCs.
Rusty, you have any other questions?
I'm good.
No? Well, yeah, I said, let's go ahead and work with, bring this forward as a next meeting.
Yeah, all that we're saying is somebody has to be the face of this group.
Right, exactly.
Point of contact.
Right. Okay?
Done.
Thank you. Okay, on to item two. Right. Discussion regarding council liaisons to boards and commissions. Uh, we want to bring that up because there are some boards and commissions that are, um, that we have some vacancies. Audrey, you wanna talk about them? No?
I'm gonna bring my list for that. That's the only one.
I know that we have, we have the urban forestry, some of there are vacant.
Arts and culture, yeah.
Arts and culture, I was doing it for a while, and that whole community just kind of fell apart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we talking about the liaison or the...
Liaisons, yeah. I just want to bring those up to see, you know, not make any decisions tonight, but to put it out there, what vacancies are available, and then we'll bring it up at our regular meeting, who we wanna, who we wanna sit on those as a liaison.
And I think some of it is whether or not you want to alternate people. So for instance, um, Councilmember Goodall is the liaison currently to Parks and Rec. I don't know if you want to alternate and put somebody else...
Oh, no, I don't wanna give up my post.
No?
No, I'm just kidding.
After the question, if somebody wants to change, that's, if, if somebody wants to change their liaison position, that's why you do it.
Um, so we really have the urban forestry board. And, um, I think, that's, I wanna say that's it, unless, oh, and the space to create commons oversight board does not currently have a liaison. I think everything else is filled by current members. So again, unless you intend to rotate the liaisons, you've got two boards.
Can I make a suggestion? I was the person that went one step forward and everybody took two steps back for the library board, I'm on Historic Main Street, and I know Chamber is not a recognized board for the city, but I tried, when we had that situation with the Chamber this last summer, I'm trying to go to those meetings as well. So if either of you three would like any of those, either one of those two boards, I would happily relinquish one of them. Historic Main Street and Library.
And I know, Erin, Audrey, you are, you're registered in that oversight, uh, space grid oversight committee.
I've been on the oversight board up until the, you know, beginning now. Um, so I think that's a natural transition, if that's what council wants.
Could spend their full liaison, you bet.
So the other, the other one, like you said, the other...
I have the Historic Main Street and Library, I have two of them.
So that would be, Erin, Williamson, if you were friends, would like to take a, think about it, we'll bring that up there next time.
I usually meet once a month. We just make a meeting, then report the concerns back.
Just like the urban forestry, and so we'll actually...
Historic Main Street board meets twice a month. And the bad part about that board is they meet in the afternoons. So if you have a job, you probably couldn't be able to do that.
So the two we have is the Main Street, or the Historic Main Street one, and the urban forestry, those are the two that...
And, and, um, and the library.
And the library, but you're on that one.
I'm on that one.
So anyway, those are some considerations for you guys to get. Okay, and we'll bring those up at the regular meeting. Anything else? Okay, Mike, you have anything? What about, any discussion on any future possible agenda items? Sure.
I'm currently, um, have been attending and, and propose to join the Partnership for a Drug-Free Community five oh one C three on behalf of the City of Trinidad as a city council member. But, um, it's something that we have to discuss and decide whether or not the council wants that representation on it. I highly recommend, I could put a word in, I think it's gonna be a very effective form.
Okay, we'll bring that up as well and see how that works.
How closer are we getting our red line item on the codes? We need to get this codes wrapped up. We're pushing three years, and that complan's supposed to be done every five to seven, and we're not even done with the one I started back, whatever.
Correct, so we, we tried and had to move her, kinda can't remember. Council had something going on different, and then she's on vacation, so she is set probably for a meeting in February to come down. Uh, because the next work session, are we still good with twenty-seven for council training?
Mm-hmm.
Council training from SIRS, so that, that's, that's gonna take a, a good session, so, yeah?
And I know as per, I don't mean to hog this, but I know as per our conversation the other day when we met, we getting closer to getting, setting down and going over this, getting something going with city manager and with, uh, lights superintendent. You can't do both, and we need to address this in a better direction, Mike.
You bet.
All right.
I, I support that wholeheartedly.
Yeah, we need to get this resolved.
Yeah, okay. Talked about that a little bit. The, the two items that I have is that I was talking about maybe having a retreat, and hopefully, probably sometime in February. Uh, I suggested this on a Friday, 'cause I will even have staff time on a Saturday. So probably like February the twenty-first, take a look at your, and we can bring that up. Uh, the other thing I was thinking about doing is, like I said, the last couple of years I've had our state of the community address, and I was thinking of, uh, February the sixth in the evening. Any questions or concerns?
I have no lifeline.
So I'm taking some consideration away.
Yeah, I, I had talked to Mike about doing some, I think we need to work forward as soon as we can on doing some work on the streets. I know we can't overlay and stuff, but like the, I had talked to Mike about doing some repair work, like, kinda like we did up on Santa Fe Trail where some of the potholes, at least if we could get some of the potholes cleaned up and fixed up to the, at least show the people and the voters, 'cause everybody I have talks to that. So first thing they say is, want the street stuff. So I, I, I don't know what kind of money we have available, but, and, and I don't know if it, and I'm not saying that the city can't do the work, but we may have to go somewhere, somewhere down the line and have that done, because they like to see... down the line and have that done, because they like to see it dug out like they did. There's manholes on Main Street here that need to be fixed, and a lot of places, and I think kind of we need to make an effort to show people that we're at least trying to get something done on it.
And I think that, that's the whole idea behind a good retreat. And I think that, the other thing I've been talking to Mike, and matter of fact, with the previous city manager, I talked him about getting the departments to do a strategic plan for each department, so that they have, somewhere, they, they know where they're going else, we could have that plan available to us, and we can question it every now and then, see if that's following that plan, see if things are happening. So, that'll all be brought up in the retreat as well. And then we will have of course all the department heads there, so we can have that discussion.
And we could all talk about many projects we have going. Like, I know there's some work for Santa Fe Trail in, in the future, north of your house, and down to Sonic, that's like writing the curl at Balini, you know?
I think it's important with...
Another review on that project, by the way.
It's important with getting the capital improvement project tax extended, we really need to get out to show, yeah, or else when that comes up next time, it may be an issue.
Yeah, correct, understood. Just, just want to mention in your packet, there, we posted the Chinworth Award banquet. We have two tables for, for the city, we sponsored two tables. So, if you want to attend the Chinworth banquet, please get with Audra or Brittany and let us know, so we can get a count.
So, you can put my wife and I down there. Those of us that are going to the actual twenty-two meeting next week, I'm not sure, did you get a copy of this, their itinerary, what's going on next week?
I am not.
Why don't you do this, Michael, give this to you, I'll make it a copy. Send that over to him and then send that out, so that we'll all have it. Also, on Wednesday, you know, the city or the Chamber of Commerce asked if we could do a presentation, so we're gonna do a presentation, and I'm going to do a presentation on Wednesday on structure of the City of Trinidad and some of the services that we provide, that's what I want to be speaking on. Mike, did you get that distributed of all the bills that we had a discussion with? Yes, I did, yes. So, me and Paco are in your computer, you should have a copy of all the bills that we were concerned about. Did you have that in your computer?
Yeah.
And the, another thing that I'm gonna be doing at the end of the month, they've asked to do the small presentation to the historical saving places in Denver. So, that's a group, they think it's about five to six hundred people, and the last one that I was at, so they've asked, and Wally asked me to probably do presentations through that date, so I'll be going up there for that.
Cool. I, I don't, not sure if this is the appropriate place for this, but I received notice this morning that I am not gonna be able to be in town the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. I know that's short notice, but I've got, I've got no choice in that, so.
You're gonna miss the SERSA train.
What's that?
You're gonna miss our SERSA train.
Well, yeah, I'll have to find some way to make up for that, but...
They might have an online train.
I'll give you a quiz, yeah.
I can usually pass quizzes.
Okay, there's anything, nothing else, anything else?
Go listen, Stowe. Okay, let's go watch this.
I've got a lot of them.
Is there really a lot?
Nothing other than, so we won't talk about that.